Okay, we're gonna start the meeting.
We're live.
All set? Okay, we're live. Good evening, and welcome to the January 22nd, 2019 Select Board Meeting. I'm John Martin, Francine Tishman, and Jim LaBrie to my left. Matt Rowland should be here in a little while, and Maureen won't be here. You're being recorded, and also it's feeding out live, so I'll be aware of that. If you have something to say, please come up to the podium, because the speaker is up there. So we're gonna say the Pledge of Allegiance, if you could all rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna start with appointments. We have none, there's no hearings, so we're going to the reports. Francine, do you have anything to report on?
There were no meetings since our last meeting last week. However, there will be a Norris School Committee meeting tomorrow evening at 6:00. That's it.
Okay, Jim?
The same, there was no meeting since the last meeting. But on the agenda for Planning Board tomorrow night is the, again, marijuana bylaw with the possible edits from Town Council, so it might be an interesting one.
Okay.
Seven o'clock here.
Seven o'clock, okay. And same with me, there has been no meetings, so Ed, would you like to start?
Sure. Let's see, first of all, the auditors from Melanson and Heath and Company were here last week starting the town's financial audit for fiscal year 18. The emergency generator for Town Hall was delivered today. Great timing, would've been nice if they could've actually gotten it here before the weekend snowstorm, but it's here nonetheless. There is a mandatory meeting for the Glendale Road Glen Grant Award, which we received in the amount of $400,000 in Westboro on Tuesday, January 29th, from 10:30 a.m. to noon. Would one of the members of the Board of Selectmen wish to attend this mandatory meeting, or would the Board like to designate myself to go and represent the town?
I'm thinking just off the top, if we can designate you, then if anybody else can attend, we could also, well, we need at least one person, correct? So, does anybody have an issue with designating Ed?
I'll move to designate Ed to attend the grant award meeting in Westboro.
Second?
Second.
Okay, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
And if anybody else can attend, we can just link up with Ed and maybe go together? Thanks.
All right, thank you. And just in addition to the original DLTA program application for a grant that we had put in with Pioneer Valley Planning, the original one was for, to update our open space and recreation plan. We also filed one for a regional approach with other communities for an approach to protect our water aquifer area, the Varns Aquifer. This may lead to a successor agreement from the Bay PAC agreement, which has expired. Old business, the next special project I'll be working on is finding that qualified consultant to perform the feasibility envelope study evaluation of the police station, the old Town Hall on E Street. And then upcoming, February 5th, Special Town Meeting at Norris Elementary School at 7:00 p.m. And Select Board Meeting to precede the Special Town Meeting at 6:00 p.m.
Because I was talking at the time, Ed, when you were talking about the land grant, did you go over the details of what we received and everything?
Other than the $400,000, no, because I kinda got in at the tail end myself, since I've been out.
So we did receive $400,000, the rest of the money will come from CPC funds. So that's a great thing for the town, so congratulations, everybody that helped with that. Okay, any questions for Ed on his report? Okay, quarterly reports, we have the library, Council on Aging and Emergency Management. Is the library? Is anybody here that wants, hi Barbara, you wanna come up and speak?
Sure. Barbara Golden, Director of the Library, Edwards Public Library. So I'm gonna go in alphabetical order here with the things I wanted to talk about. First of all, to let you know, we have an American flag retirement bin at the library. This is an eagle project by Jake Constantine. So it's in our lobby, and it's already almost full. For flags that are damaged, American flags that are damaged or not in use anymore. There was a book sale in May, and the Friends of the Library are already collecting books, and we're having sorting sessions, so if anybody listening would like to help sort the books, please call the library. We do have a person named Pam Lor who stores them for us, so once they're sorted, she comes, picks them up, then we sort the new ones, and then she brings them back right before the sale. So this is a fundraiser for the Friends of the Library. We have applied for a grant for $6,000 for the Community Preservation Committee. You probably know about this. We have a new website, and part of the website is a tab called Local History. And an employee who was working in the library and retired did a lot of the content on that local history. The thing is, it's, right now, it needs its own domain name, so you'll see ads on that particular site. But we're gonna get a domain name for the local history part of the website. So it'll have a different domain name for the library one, and it'll have its own website, you know, website link. Parts that have to still be done are the Civil War, the World War I, World War II, local home days, the local clubs. A lot of it is filled in, but there's a lot more to do. So this is gonna be on the Special Town warrant from the CPC, and it would be to fund a person for three hours a week for two years to fill it in. And we're taking suggestions from people, things they would like to see on it. And you could check it out and see what's already up there. We're now the designated place to get the letters for the community sign. That's across from JP's, because the place it was stored is moving. I guess it was an attorney's office or something. We have an e-newsletter, and we've put the department heads on it. If you want, we can put the Board of Selectmen on it. It comes out about once a month, and it has events and news of the library, should we do that?
Do you have the main town website on it? Or MyTown Southampton, maybe that would be a better place, so they could...
To put it there, to put the e-newsletter there?
Because they could find everything there.
Okay, is that through Art, right?
Pardon me?
Would we put it through Art, or through MyTown?
I'm not sure.
It's an e-newsletter, it's not like an agenda for a meeting.
Who does your e-newsletter, who puts it?
A person in our staff, Johanna.
Okay, so Johanna can just take that?
It's MailChimp, and it goes out to email addresses.
Right, but if you just put the link for the Town of Southampton website in your email...
Uh-huh, Town of, okay, I'll see what I can do. Yeah, that's what I'll do, yeah.
Art knows it, yeah.
Okay. Remanda Kemp is going to be organizing a marathon as a fundraiser for the library, and it's gonna happen in May. The link is already up on our website, and there's already wait for people to register. It's a 2K and a 5K. She's President of the Rotary Club, and so she's doing this for the library. And we're hoping to use the money for programming, because in our budget from the town, there's no line item for programming. We have to do fundraising for everything, for programming. So that's what we're thinking right now, that we would use it for. It's called Where the Wild Things Run. So, let's see, we do, we're offering tech help now at the library, well, we were offering it, but the person who was doing it had to stop doing it because of an increase in our job hours. So we have found a new person, it's free. And if anybody needs tech help, for instance, overdrive, downloading, you know, ebooks, audiobooks, they can call the library, and we can make an appointment with the person, Robert Rosinski, he's local. Let's see, then we have, I'm gonna be talking about programs at the end. We will be needing a new roof, and I've talked to Ed about it. We have, we're gonna be talking to the Capital Improvement Committee, and we have an estimate, but we'll be getting more, I guess, I'm not sure of the procedure right now, but we did get one estimate. The staff reorganization since one person retired is completed. And the latest person is Emily Manska, and she's been trained. So now we're totally through that whole transition for the one person who retired. And as I mentioned, we have a new website, I hope everybody will check it out. It's, I think it's a big improvement over the last one. And just to let you know, we've been using workshops that are free through the Massachusetts Library System and the CWMR system, so I went to a Massachusetts Library System workshop for directors. And then Lisa and I are gonna be going to a workshop Thursday morning on Overdrive, which is the app for downloading everything.
Is there a problem?
You're rubbing your papers on the microphone.
Thank you. Don't wanna do that.
The people at home are going like this.
Really? Whoops. Okay, so the last thing I'm gonna talk about is programming. It's all up on our website, but we have a regular writers group that meets on Tuesday morning. We have a once-a-month book club, and we have a PJ Tea Party coming up to celebrate Valentine's Day in February, why are you laughing?
A PJ?
Pyjama.
That's what I know, yes.
And Lindsay Sabados, our new State Rep's, gonna be reading books to the kids at the Valentine's PJ Tea Party. Let's see, we're gonna be having ukulele for adults, February 26th at 6:30. We had ukulele for kids, and it was a big hit. And ukuleles are a big thing in libraries right now, so, just so you know. We had virtual reality for kids workshop, which was a lot of fun. I didn't have a turn, but I would've liked one. We had a winter fairy house building event. We had the Big Hampton Reads Community Wide Program, which we do at East Hampton, North Hampton, and West Hampton, and the book was Never Caught. I brought some over here, a lot of people took it out. We had programs, and that was pretty successful. And then we've had wine and books at the Glendale Ridge Winery twice now, and we'll plan another one in the spring, and we had three local authors, and that was well-attended. The Story Hour is very popular, it's Wednesday morning. Cindy Demon is the storyteller now, and it brings almost 50 people. It's like between, usually around 40 to 50. So it's, it's been, you know, filling the meeting room plus. And then, let's see, was, is there's anything else? And we have a Lego Club once a month, and the Friends are looking for more Friends, if anybody out there is interested, and they meet once a month. And the trustees meet once a month. Do I have any questions, or?
Well, obviously you have a lot going on.
Yeah.
That's what's good about having you come up here, because you don't hear about these things otherwise. So that's great, we appreciate it. So any, any questions for Barbara?
I have two questions.
Yes.
Does the programming for kids also just depend on volunteers or the Friends? So there's nothing in the line item budget that takes care of the program thing for the kids?
Actually, the Story Hour is partially, is pretty much funded by, it's a collaborative, the Hampshire Something or Other Collaborative, I have it here somewhere. That's actually a good question, because they pay for the storyteller.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And they actually sometimes provide us, like, they brought us a rug, Hampshire Regional Grant. It's some, I think it's called the Collaborative, so that's...
The Hampshire Educational Collaborative?
Excuse me?
The Hampshire Educational Collaborative?
I can't, maybe, some Hampshire Collaborative. They do it for the communities that serve Hampshire Regional.
Okay.
High school, yeah.
The other question is, is the roof, the original roof?
Yes, 22 years. And we have a man who's been patching it, and he would not, there's no conflict of interest. I mean, he would not be bidding for the whole job, because he wouldn't do that. But he's been telling us for a couple of years that it's really beyond the patching stage. Things are falling off the roof, and he has to patch them, so, yeah.
So you said you got one estimate, do you remember how much it was?
I have it here, it's, I talked to Ed about it. The estimate was about $34,000, but Ed thought it was really a lot more, because this probably didn't count, you know, what's that called, prevailing wages? Right, Ed, that was something like that?
Correct.
Yeah. But it was some ballpark, and it was by RCI Roofing.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Barbara.
Okay, do we have somebody here from the COA? Hi.
Hi. Joan Linehan, Director of the Council on Aging. First of all, I'd like to thank Janet Kane, our Chair, who put together this outline. And I'd like to thank Renee, our Liaison, and Laurie Loizel for being here tonight.
Thank you.
The COA mission is to, is dedicated to meet the information, service, and recreational needs of our older adults in our community. The Council on Aging and Senior Center provide a place to promote a spirit of healthy, positive aging through education, activities for all seniors, their families, and the community at large. And as you may know, the Director, myself, I work 26 hours a week. I have an Assistant Director who works 10 hours a week, a Volunteer Coordinator who works only four hours a week, plus our Fritta Driver who averages about 25 hours a week. The total population right now for Southampton is 6,225 people. Of those, of that population, 1,973 are over 60. That's 31% of our population, which is, has grown from 2010. The population of over 55 is 2,463, which is almost 40% of our population. So as you know, everyone's getting older. My position, I manage the budget, the grants, I'm Safe Certified, coordinate activities, do payroll, create ridership reports, answer phones, manage the drivers and their schedule, write and submit grants, coordinate special events. At times, I drive seniors back and forth from appointments as needed. I fill out fuel assistance applications, set up for luncheons, schedule health fairs, general housekeeping at the center, and we try to create a warm and inviting environment for our seniors. For services, we have a program called TRIAD, which you're probably familiar with. That's the seniors and law enforcement and safety officers working together. This past year, we made up 18 house number signs, which were put up by the Fire Department. We had 40-plus sand deliveries for safety, and we had a shredding event in September. There's a Shine Counselor who is in our monthly newsletter, and he helps people with their health insurance needs by appointment. And we also have a medical loan program, and we gave out about 20 pieces of medical equipment this past year. We have about 378 people that have signed up to be a member of our center. We average about 100 people a week, and we're only open the four days. We have about 35 volunteers who help out with many things, like breaking up and setting up activities, leading exercise classes, running bingo on Wednesdays. One acts as a librarian for our book nook, and we have assistance with data entry for our MySenior Center. The Friends of the Council on Aging are like our right arm. They recently received their 501(c)(3), and so they are, enhance the financial and operational support for programs. There's now 140 members, which has grown from last year. Some of the examples of their programs are their monthly luncheons, their guest speakers, musical entertainment, they hold an annual tag sale, they support our travel group, and they purchase needed utilities like MySenior Center and maintenance for the next four years. They also help with our Fritta budget when we had a shortfall in June. We do, we can't run our programs without grants. We have the Franklin County Regional Transportation Authority, who gives us $30,000 a year to run the van and do transportation for our seniors. We help about 75 people, and we had 1,541 rides last year. The State Formula Grant, which we get almost 15, oh, well, $14,496, helps to pay for my, the administrative assistant, the volunteer coordinator, developing programs, mileage, equipment maintenance, postage, and other dues and things, conferences that help out the Council on Aging. It also helps for our annual volunteer recognition. Some of the new things that are happening in the FY19, we opened up a Facebook page. We have the monthly newsletter on our town website, and the February one just came in today, so if anybody wants to see it firsthand, it's here. We have, we tried to add some new things, a lunch bunch, getting people together for lunches and socialization. As you may or may not know, we're one of the few Council on Agents that do not have a nutrition program, a weekly or a daily one. So we do offset it with the Friends monthly, and we've been trying to add pizza or soup, socials, just to get people together. We have a wonderful walking club that was initiated last year. Now they're walking three days a week, and they're walking inside at Eastworks, which is in East Hampton. We also had a Go For Life Family Fun Walk in September. We had 48 participants. We're working in the near future with the DOPA Fit Parkinson Movement Program, and we're doing a, it's gonna be free to the seniors, a six-week Wednesday program. We're looking at a Diabetic Management Three Week Course from Hoyop Medical Center. We had a wonderful murder mystery dinner theater. We have line dancing, ballroom dancing, square dancing, Tai Chi, Healthy Bones in Balance, which is from the RSVP program. We had a wonderful fall fashion show and tea with 50 participants. And we're taking a lot of trips, we're planning a lot of things for the upcoming year. We also were able to get an earmark from the state for $5,500. And we're looking at a new program in the spring called Pickleball, which you may have heard a little bit about. It's similar to ping pong and badminton, but they're gonna be able to use the tennis courts. So Janet's currently working with the Park and Rec Department to hopefully use some of those courts, and we'll buy the equipment, and we'll be able to get pickleball in our community. Westfield already has it at the Y, if you're interested in finding out what pickleball's all about. It's very user-friendly and for all ages, even seniors. So some of the challenges, obviously, our transportation is never enough, one bus and one driver. We just can't meet our transportation needs at this time. So we have a lot of volunteers and myself that drive on occasion. Adding new programs to a facility that has limited hours and limited space. Our staffing, obviously, we don't have a lot of, so we have to work within our bounds and use our volunteers. Our outreach in our homebound, which the police and fire in the Highland Valley have been doing right now because of our limited staffing. So we'd like to work to keep seniors in Southampton and work more with the senior housing, the housing needs of our community. Let's see, we have, we'd like to see maybe more center hours, possibly different hours in the evening, or possibly a weekend. And this year, I'm working towards my Director Certification, supported by the Board. We're developing a strategic long-term plan. We're getting, developing a needs assessment tool. You have this all in front of you, so I don't have to read everything, but we wanna become an age-friendly community and have our seniors stay in town. It's a wonderful community. I think people are active, they're looking for things, and we'd like to provide what people need here in Southampton. Does anybody have any questions for me?
You wanna start?
Well, I have one question. Great, I mean, times you guys are doing a great job. I know you work 26 hours a week, but what is the Senior Center open, is it the same?
So we're open 26 hours, so we're open 8:30 to 3:00.
Four days a week.
Four days a week.
Monday through Thursday, I assume?
Monday through Thursday.
Okay.
And that has, like I said, we've, we've had other occasions after hours that have been very successful, so I'm sure we'll be doing more of that.
And how old do I have to be to be considered a Senior?
How old are you now, then you can join.
You qualify.
So 60 is the technical age, but we have people under 60, and in our reports, we keep track of people under 60, so if you wanna come... We're intergenerational friendly, in fact, that's another area that we wanna pursue with Norris School and get some intergenerational program going.
The Fit for Life program was intergenerational, it was a lot of fun, so I'm glad to hear that. And also, just so you know, even though we have this in front of us, the people that are in the audience don't have this, nor do the people at home have it. So I'm glad you did a summary, because this is a great summary of all the good activity that you're doing. This time of year, I'm particularly worried about the seniors because of the weather. And I'm just wondering what kind of outreach, you had mentioned about outreach. That's usually one of the ones that is hard to do.
So I know Charlie's gonna be talking about emergency management. I did get a call right before the storm, and somebody said, "Well, I'm on oxygen. If my power goes out, what do I do?" And right now, you know, I'm glad to work with the safety personnel and emergency management to see, to keep our seniors safe. So at this point, I don't have any specific answers, but I'm sure that we'll be developing, as we need it, we've been developing places, especially now we have a generator, so I'm sure, you know, there'll be, in the future, we'll have access to more assistance for people.
Most oxygen companies provide a backup portable...
Wellness checks too, right?
Oh, the police do the wellness checks, that's right. But they do have backups, that's good to know.
Well, when they deliver oxygen, they usually provide a tank, just in case of power outages, if they have a concentrator, so...
See, I didn't know that, so when she, she seemed nervous, and I told her to call 911 if she really was nervous, I knew the police would help her.
Yeah. Thanks.
Thank you.
Francine, do you have any?
I just wanna say, you know, I'm the treasurer of the Friends for the Council on Aging, and we subsidize them to some degree with the resources that we have, but we don't have unlimited resources. And I think what you see here, what you've heard, is a huge accomplishment on a very, at very low cost to the town, and that's something to think about in the future. Because the population is growing, and if you've been in that room, the capacity is 75 people. We have almost 2,000 seniors, where are they gonna go? So, I mean, that's something to think about in terms of the future, and we're all gonna get there. I'm there, you'll get there.
If we're lucky, we all get there.
Yeah, if you're lucky.
Can I just say something else? Do you wanna say something?
Yeah, I do, but go ahead.
The MySenior Center is, it's a scan thing, so it takes account of how many people come to various programs. And so if you are eligible to get one, it really helps, when you have higher numbers, it enables more grants sometimes. So I encourage people to join if they're eligible.
Now Joan, who does your newsletter? You do. I think it's improved, I think it's improved greatly the last year plus, I think it's interesting. It stands out, so that's, that's great work. And donations for medical equipment, I remember a year and a half ago, that was an issue. So we're back to taking donations? Okay, what, what type of donations, so people out there know?
So I know people were worried about safety and cleanliness, and so that's something that we are worried about too, but it's a big need. So we take wheelchairs, walkers, tub benches, shower chairs, canes, anything that might be of help to people when they're just getting out of rehab. Sometimes they use it and bring it back, sometimes they keep it, so, yeah. We have room in the basement, that used to be the Council on Aging, so there is room for that.
How about crutches?
We do take crutches, and if we don't use them, the TRIAD, Dave Fenton from the Sheriff's Office, he'll take them and distribute them in the area to people that need them.
So if anybody has them, bring them in?
Certainly.
Okay.
As long as we don't get a deluge.
I have a lot, my attic room, my mom was using the stuff, so you'll see that.
Thank you, we're a little low right now, so we have room.
But just in general, I think last 12 months to 18 months, the COA Board has really come together and just, the seniors you talk to, I think it's been great, and it's great improvement, so, thanks for leading that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Emergency management. Mr. Kinnicki?
Mr. LaBrie, I started collecting Social Security this month. You're right behind me, my friend.
Before you start, could you introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Charlie Kinnicki, I'm the Emergency Manager for the Town of Southampton. I have a staff, me, myself, and I. I have an alternate as the Fire Chief. What I'm going to try to do is give you sort of a six-month update as to what's been occurring in my office. The first thing I would like to do is bring up the emergency generator to Town Hall. That generator is gonna help us with continuity of government, to be able to maintain services if, if the power goes out. But I also wanna recognize Senator Hemison, because he was instrumental in pushing this forward for the town to get this funding, and I hope this Board recognizes him down the road when that is connected.
Did we, did we send anything in the past to him on this?
We have, but actually, when he came out and we did the little thing for the Senior Center when he got that grant, I had mentioned to him that it was about 10 to 12 weeks before it would get delivered, but... but would want to have him out once it was online and do a photo op to thank him once again.
That'd be great.
I think it's very important to acknowledge the people that do the work to get this going.
Absolutely.
Now, the next grant. About six months ago, I became aware of a hazard mitigation grant to take and deal with potential hazards that could occur in town. We focused on a water line that goes underneath the Manhan River by the Lyman Sheep Metal Pond area. Our water commissioners in their department did an excellent job of putting together a report and submitting this grant application. We're looking at about seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. And if this grant is awarded, we'll be able to raise that water line out of the river, attach it to the bridge where it should be. And we won't be worried about it undermining, losing the water in that section of town. This is also having a domino effect. State Fishery and Wildlife is moving forward to get their own funding to tear down that old dam because it's deemed unsafe. You actually have a letter in your package, I believe, tonight, to sign to endorse that approach. So if this grant is approved and the water commissioners keep going, then we're going to see fish and wildlife moving out of dam. That whole section of town is going to have a change. Personal feeling, I'd much rather see the dam there in the pond. But nobody has the money to rebuild that dam.
And it's on private property.
It's on private property, coupled with the fact that we have an old water line there that has to be upgraded anyways. So stay tuned. Federal government is closed. I have no clue when this is going to be reviewed.
So what was the final decision on that? Is it just the bridge or is it from Foamer up to White?
It is my understanding that it's from Brickyard Road, across the bridge, and a little bit up the hill. And then it stops. If we went further, it would be over a million dollars. If it was over a million dollars, then we'd fall into another pool, which would be a national competition. We didn't want to go into that national competition, because our odds of receiving any funding would drop. We also received an EMPG grant, which is two-thousand-four-hundred dollars. One of the issues when I became the EMD was the fact that the EMD has no home in this town. The emergency preparedness material is either at my home, some is at the police station, some is at the fire station, some's at the highway department. School department has a little bit of this and that. Town Hall has a little bit of this and that. So we've been working with the acting police chief. And we're going to take one of the conference rooms that's down in the basement of the police station and make it into an emergency operations center. This does not mean it's going to be massive bells and whistles and everything. It's just going to be a central point for us to rally in times of emergencies, so that we can work in a more constructive manner to deal with whatever the emergency is in town. So that grant was two-thousand-four-hundred dollars, and that's moving forward. The other thing that came to light, and I thought it was interesting when the Council on Aging sort of brought this up, was the fact that it appears the town of Southampton has never signed any memorandums of agreement with any sources in town for support during an emergency. Now, memorandum agreement basically are entities in town that are private industry types that take and provide us support in a lot of different menus. And one of the ones I was looking at was our church next door. What has happened out in the eastern part of the state is we had those gas explosions. The first thing this Commonwealth became aware of was there was no place for the Commonwealth to take and have a resource recovery center, which is basically a place where all the, I'll say, professionals, FEMA, MEMA, building inspector, insurance adjusters, Red Cross, everyone can meet and address the needs of the population in that area. So we've had discussions with the church about this. The other thing that we have is we don't have a place for a community point of distribution. If we had trailer trucks of stuff like back in the old days in West Springfield, remember that, Ed?
Yes, I do.
We need places that we can unload trailers and set it up, so this material can be distributed to the residents of the town. We looked at all the operations in the town that we saw, all the industry and stuff, and we kept circling right back to the church. It has a large parking lot. It's in the center of town. It's near the police station. It's near the town hall. So from a functional point of view, it seems workable. I took the liberty of drafting an MOU and gave it to the church, assuming it was a draft. The draft got signed and returned. That draft basically says we're going to do what we always did. We plow in the driveway there anyways for Churchill and all that. That's basically all we're asking at this point, is we can use the parish and the parking lot for emergencies, for whatever the emergency is. But the only obligation the town's going to have is plowing their parking lot and standing it. Ed has a copy of it. I'm not looking for any signatures tonight, but you need to get that moving.
Is it a matter that they don't have a generator?
At this point in time, no, but it's like the catch-all. If they get signed up to be assisting us, then that opens up certain fundings for them to get a generator. Remember, this is not going to be a shelter. This would be a warming or cooling center. But we also have to look at the fact that, we talk about the population for seniors in town. This building couldn't possibly handle half of that population if it came in. If we ended up with a couple hundred people, we're going to need a couple of places to do something with.
So Ed, if you can look at the MOU and bring it up to us, because you want to talk to Randall too, make sure he's in sync with that.
That, and Mr. Kinnicki's also been working on trying to get one with the Bussin Company. We were actually kind of hoping that maybe we'd have both of them to come forward at the same time.
Okay, so you're working on that. Great, thanks.
Just to speak about the Bussin Company, presently, we don't have any agreements with any bus company that if we have an emergency and we have to transport people, we have nothing but the good graces of calling a bus company and hoping they're willing to help us. And we have no statistics on how many buses they have, what types of buses they have, so on, so forth. Another MOU that I'm working on down the road is two food establishments. So that if we need to bring in sandwiches or stuff like that, we'll have two MOUs with two different restaurants in town that can do that. And bottled water, that kind of stuff. And finally, funny as it may sound, portable toilets. These are things that are in the pipeline, but the church and the school bus system are paramount. Those are the ones we're focusing on right now. Let's see.
Just before we get going, so is the board comfortable with that process? Everybody's fine? Good, thanks.
Now, I told you about those MOUs and that, so we're all set there, about the cooling centers and all that. Well, the next quarterly meeting of Mass Emergency Management is March seventh. That's an AGOM. I attend those every quarter. That's where we get our updates and basically our quote marching orders as to what the state's expecting. But if we can get our emergency operations center up and running, then we can store the information we need there and have it in a lockbox, so that the police chief, fire chief, highway superintendent, town administrator, chair of the board of selectmen, all the senior people in town have access to it, so if something happens, they're not waiting for Charlie Kinnicki to come off the forty acres out in the back plowing the hayfield.
Is that going to be electronically available too?
The electronic version of these things is a problem. Because they'll be in a laptop and available electronically, but somewhere down the line, I have to teach a number of people how to go on Web EOC with the state and how to communicate with MEMA in times of a disaster. Because they do it electronically. They don't usually use the telephone. And we're so far behind on this, it's going to take me a while to move it forward.
Do we have any cloud storage, Charlie, Ed, that we use at all?
I don't think we need that.
No.
Okay, I would say if we did, we could load it up into the cloud and anybody could access it.
Well, that's part of the problem. We don't want everybody accessing. A lot of information in this is.
But you could password protect it, yeah.
So, but all this is baby steps, trying to get this going. So, and I'm starting from day one with a lot of this. So that's where we are with that. The only other thing is June eighteenth and nineteenth, there's a statewide conference on all hazards in Marlboro. And my hope is to go to that. I usually have attended that.
Any questions for Charlie?
Yeah, I have just a quick question. Since it's major disasters you're always planning for, if everything's down, what's your, sat phones? I know ham radios used to do it years ago. How do you communicate?
The sat phones don't exist with us in this town, because our budget prohibits us from having sat phones. It's as simple as that. The other part to it is, we have communications with our police department and our fire department with things like WMLAC for straddling information to the state if we need to. And finally, yes, there's a whole set of divisions relative to ham radio operators that could be incorporated into this. My problem, Jim, is I'm starting off at the ground level with this. I have worked way up on the ladder, and I'm down at the ground level here just trying to get what we bare bones have to have to get it going.
I just know that there's a lot of ham operators out there. This is what they usually do. They all come to help when a situation like that happens.
Well, it's like MEMA, you used to have a stash of eight-hundred megahertz radios. They used to be in green kits and, or yellow kits. And basically, it would bounce off the repeater at Mount Tom, so you could grab some of those portables to use for communications. But.
Just asking.
Charlie, could you mention about Code Red a little bit, just for people to hear?
Code Red is funded through this budget. And basically, it is the system we use to do reverse phone calls to everybody in town to alert them on everything. We're typically using it at this point just to announce things like, you know, there's no town meeting or there's a school emergency or something like that. We try not to use it much at all, because it's an emergency communication. Costs us about, what, three grand a year, is it something like that?
Thirty-nine hundred.
So, but that's what we do.
Do we know what percent of residents are connected to Code Red?
I don't. I don't. We'd have to bounce that back. That would be a good question to ask them.
You think most people know about it?
They know about it because of, if I remember right, they have to sign up for their census report, and I think it's in there.
Okay, but that would be a good thing to do, because there may be people that aren't even aware that there's an emergency system in town to communicate with them if something happens.
See, part of the problem with these systems, and I'm just talking here, is like, that Code Red system is supposed to have a segregated area in case there's a dam breach that only affects X amount of people during a flooding situation. We haven't broken that out to really break that out. Because I'm a staff of one person, you know, and I can only get to so many things.
But we're such a small town, I don't know that that would be worth the time and effort to do it. I mean, if I found out that there was a dam break on, you know, the Line Street area, I mean, it's not going to be the end of the world, so long as it's not an overused system, you know, where you're using it all the time and people are just like, oh, click.
Yeah, and that's what we have to avoid, is not using it to be a public address system.
Right.
But that's not the way to choose now, like you said before.
It's fine. The way we're doing it, I mean, if you really want to jump back in time, we used to have a siren on the fire station. And laugh as you may laugh, but during those tornadoes that came through, most people got the attention of Barnes Airport siren going off and Westover Air Force Base's sirens going off. That's what got a lot of the populations to put the TV and the radio on to find out what's going on.
Yeah, you're right.
Was that fun? Did you learn something?
I always learn something when you're there. Any more questions for Charlie? Thank you very much. Appreciate your work.
Okay, guys.
I know.
Okay, old business, 111 Glendale Road. We already talked about the grant we received for four-hundred thousand and the balance from CPC, so we'll be going forward on that. Any other questions or thoughts on Glendale Road?
No, just.
I'm so excited, Mr. Martin.
I just want to say thank you to all the people that work very hard on this. This is tremendous news. We don't have to borrow against future CPC. And it's just been a lot of work by a lot of people, and I just want to say thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, it was a real grassroots effort that I think pushed this rock up the hill, so.
Yes, very good.
Great job, everybody.
Great job. I just want to let you know, last time I was sleeping was Sunday night, so. I had a flight back last night, seven-and-a-half hour delay, so. I'm breath behind, but thanks for bringing it up, April. I appreciate it. So next, Palmory Meadow Road, fifteen acres. Write a first refusal letter from Conservation and Water Commission.
Yep, we've received letters from the Conservation Commission and the Water Commission in support of us not waiving our right of first refusal and moving forward with trying to purchase that property.
Yeah, and Don Warren brought a letter from the Southampton Historical Commission. Says, "After careful deliberation, including review of Professor Robert Newton's comments on the importance of the parcel to the town well aquifer, our committee unanimously voted on January fifteenth, twenty nineteen, to support the town's acquisition of this property by exercising its right of first refusal." Thank you for attention, so we add that to the list.
And also, I know the planning board voted as well. Did you get that letter? I thought I saw Paul send it out.
I may have.
The planning board voted also to exercise the right of first refusal.
And the water commissioners.
I don't think there's any doubt that it's an important piece of land that we want to pursue.
No, the water commissioners also.
And we also have a grant outstanding for that, correct?
Right, we've applied for, the water commissioners applied for that grant, which would be eligible for, I think it's, it's a fifty percent grant. So I think what we applied for was like two-hundred-and-twelve or two-hundred-and-thirteen thousand dollars we'd be eligible for, for that property. And actually now, hopefully, that we know the answer on the Glendale Road grant, the water commissioners can reengage with the CPC, since they know what their obligations are under the Glendale Grant.
Right. Okay, great, so we'll keep everybody informed on that. Next, fiscal nineteen budget and expenditures review. It's in everybody's packet there. Take a minute to go through it. So we're basically a little more than halfway through the fiscal year, goes to January tenth. So it should be roughly fifty-five percent or so to be within budget. There's a few out of whack, but they're not large numbers, as I went through them quickly. Does anybody else have a question on this as we go through, just?
Yeah, I have a question. Our phone system, is that through Verizon or through Charter?
It would be through Verizon under state contract.
Okay, because I read an article where, because the landlines are basically going away, the phone companies are going to raise the prices pretty significantly to support their infrastructure for the phones that are left. And so they're recommending, if you can, to go to the voice-over internet systems. And is that a possibility for us?
It's a possibility for us. I have some issues with voice-over internet without retaining some copper wire redundancy for emergencies, but yes, it is a possibility.
But you could cut back substantially on not every office having a Verizon line, but only certain offices, like you said.
You can. In the long run, it's actually a more expensive way to go. Because I've got the analysis for the capital. It's actually cheaper to put in a phone system under the hardwire.
Just from personal experience where I work, we've gone the VoIP system on a lot of areas. And cost-wise, we'd have to find out, but it offers a lot more, use the expression, bandwidth of services that you can have and functionality. So it wouldn't hurt to look at it. Renee, do you have any experience with that, or?
No.
Okay, so it's worth looking at, putting on our list for sure. One of the ones that stuck out for me is the highway building expenses. It should be about fifty-five and it's close to seventy. Do you know anything about that, Ed? Was there anything that had to be prepaid upfront, or?
I don't know about prepaid. I can tell you that they did have a failure for one of the heaters and actually the garage bay that they repair the trucks in, and it was not repairable. They had to replace that heater, so I'm sure that's a good portion of that.
So maybe at your next department meeting, you can just ask Randall?
Certainly.
Thank you.
And all the school grants are all reimbursed grants, right, after the fact? Ed?
What's that?
All the school grants, they're all reimbursable grants, right? Title I.
Right.
Bed circuit breaker.
So, that's all timing issues.
That's all timing, okay.
And I gotta say, we've said it before, as we've gone over these, the departments this year really seem to be working hard to stay within the, the budget that was approved, so I want to say thanks once again to all those folks. Because in the past, these have been all over the, the map. Any other questions on the expense side? Hampshire Regional Budget and Expenditure Agreement Review, that's just still a placeholder, Ed, for now? Did you catch that, Ed?
No, I didn't.
Okay, the Hampshire Regional Budget and Expenditure, that's just a placeholder for now?
Yes, it is.
We haven't done any more since last, okay.
No.
And East Street Bridge update, the same thing?
East Street Bridge would be the same thing. I'm going back and forth with VHB. They actually have started to schedule some work out there and are working with the Conservation Commission on that work.
Okay. Next is new business, Southampton Council on Aging Bylaws for Review and Select Board Approval. It's number eight in the packet.
And the, the Council on Aging has updated their bylaws and they thought it would be an appropriate time to bring them forward to get the Board of Selectmen's approval of them.
Okay, is there anybody here that can tell us what the, yeah, the changes were?
Sure. Hi, Janet Kane, Glendale Road, Chair for the Council on Aging. Yeah, we expanded the alternate area because we had alternates listed in our bylaws, but we didn't have terms listed and appointment by the select board, so we kind of tightened that up a little bit. And we also added term limits so that each member, board member can serve at least two ter, a minimum of two terms, a maximum, I'm sorry, a maximum of two terms plus a partial term if they're taking over as long as there's a replacement for that position. So, we, that we can, you know, make sure that we have new perspectives and new ideas coming into the board.
Were those the only two areas that changed?
Those were the only two areas that we had updated.
Okay. Any questions for Janet on those two areas? They're pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Janet, I just had a question. Do you know if these bylaws match the town bylaws relative to like the composition of the board? And if someone doesn't attend for three months, then?
I don't know specifically, but I'm pretty sure they're, they're pretty close to them. And it's not unusual, most Council on Ageds in Massachusetts have bylaws to kind of guide their, guide their committees, so. I don't know exactly, but I wouldn't, I don't know, Francine was on that committee, I don't know if you know anything about that.
Yeah, it's, I believe it's consistent with what's in the town bylaws. But I'd have, I'd have to go back and check.
Sorry.
My memory. And Virginia's here, she would know also.
I too would have to check.
Okay. Well, if they're passed, then it would be, the, these bylaws would supersede the other ones anyway, right?
Right.
Right, exactly.
So, you're all comfortable with that, that's what matters.
Yeah. Because I like the way you define the alternate members voting, right? Because that's been an issue in the past on different boards, so it's very clear, which is great.
Yeah, I mean, they can vote as long as there's not a quorum.
Not a quorum.
So, they're an active member of the board.
Right.
They attend the meetings, they have the same requirements, but they don't have a voting rate unless we don't have a quorum and they fill in for the quorum.
And they can participate, but they just can't vote unless...
And it's a great fill-in once people, as we turn over or as somebody retires, like Dorothy did recently, we have somebody to, to move right in and we don't sit around with... Yeah, that has, that's not coming in green like a number of us did a couple of years ago, so.
Yeah, that's a little tough.
Is there a limit on how many alternates can?
We're, we're working with two right now. It's not in the bylaws, but...
Well, what I'm saying is, to be voting members, if you're missing two, so you're going to have two alternates voting at one meeting, I'm just...
Only if there's not a quorum, right? So, if we have, you know, fifty-one percent and we need, we don't have quite fifty-one percent, we need one of them to vote, you know, that's...
But are you asking how many alternates you can have on a board?
Yeah, let's say you had five alternates and then they, could they be the whole board at that? That's what I, I was going there.
Yeah, no, it's only, only if the board members aren't, don't reach a quorum.
But is there...
They only get to vote if they're on, of the seven board members, if we don't have a quorum of the board members.
So, if you had one board member and four alternates, you could have a meeting, if you have that many alternates.
No. Uh, yeah, I guess so, yes.
If you had that many, that's all I was asking.
Yeah.
If there was a limit on how many alternates could be on the board at once, that's all I was...
We would have a bigger problem than that. Well, hopefully those alternates become board members, you know, but...
Yeah, that's, that's the objective of it.
Yes, yes.
So, do we have any questions on this before we take a motion?
Nope. I'll make a motion to approve the bylaws of the Council of Aging.
Second. Okay. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Or unanimous? Thanks, Janet. Okay, Jen Ramsey. Welcome back officially.
I've met most of you already. Hello, Jen Ramsey, East Hampton Media. We are nonprofit community media center and public access television station. We serve East Hampton and Southampton. We broadcast on channel one ninety-one. We provide information, local government transparency through meeting coverage such as this, video production education, community building and free speech opportunities to all who live, work or go to school in East Hampton and Southampton for free. We're equipped with professional video production equipment and a television studio for people to come and use. We're in the East Works Building at one sixteen Pleasant Street in East Hampton. Members often utilize our equipment to film local events, lectures, performances. We have two knowledgeable staff members who can train, consult and support members of the community through your production. If you'd like to learn more, you can follow us on YouTube, Facebook, Instagram or visit us at easthamptonmedia.org. So, I started this position just after Thanksgiving, so it's been about two months now. I'm in the process of rebuilding the organization and positioning us to better serve the communities and stay relevant in our quickly changing digital age. I've been working in public access for over, for about seven years and I enjoy serving the community and I look forward to working with all of you more. Our sole source of funding, as you know, is through peg franchise fees paid by the cable company to Southampton and East Hampton and then the cities then cut us a check. So, as the landscape of the industry is changing and more people drop their cable subscriptions, also the FCC is exploring changing some of the laws, one of my biggest jobs is to look for other sources of funding to keep us alive. And some other things I want to do is expand the services we offer to encompass new media, web streaming, hyper-local journalism, more robust multimedia trainings. I'm committed to promoting civic engagement through public meeting and forum coverage, expanding community outreach efforts to organizations and schools in Southampton such as the COA and the library, which I look forward to working with both of you. And so, I did want to mention, I understand we have some outdated equipment in this room that needs updating. And I understand we're operating under an expired contract. So, those are my two main priorities in working with Southampton right now. It's going to take some time to implement, but I do promise you, those are my two priorities. And I look forward to working with all of you and getting to know you better. And that's all I have. Any questions?
We're talking about equipment because we've, we've had issues along the way. Do you have a sense of when a survey will be done and kind of coming up with ideas on how to improve the equipment?
What do you mean by a survey?
Well, for instance...
Survey who?
Well, survey maybe the people that are watching because they often text us or let us know what's wrong. They can't hear us or, you know, the voice cuts in and out.
Um, I'd have to think about how to implement that, but I'm definitely in the works of researching new gear to outfit this room.
So, how do you research, I mean, based on what parameters?
Basically, I'm going to look, I'm going to look at what's out there for equipment in our industry, what other public access TV stations are using right now. I have a consultant who I'll be working with and, yeah.
But I guess from our point of view, we might have some ideas of what's good for microphones and all that. And, I mean, I don't know about you folks, but these are a little bit cumbersome and...
Right, yeah.
Yeah, rather than, because I think this was, these were brought in a while back, quite a while ago and they were just put here saying, okay, this is what we want for you, but we find them not necessarily easy to use, so...
I'll tell you, a lot of other communities, their council chambers have similar microphones, so it's kind of a standard. But I do want to look into options, maybe mounting things on the ceiling so that there aren't any microphones in your face. But we have to think about, the echo in this room is really bad, so that may not work for us. So, I have some research to do, basically.
Yeah, I guess what I'm saying, you know, get some feedback from the folks that, that use them up here.
Yeah, I'm happy to get feedback if, I have cards if you want to email me or call me.
Yeah. Yeah. Ed, maybe if you can put it down on our agenda at some point in the near future, we can talk about it. Great. Any, any questions for Jen? Okay, thank you. Look forward to seeing you again.
Yes, for sure.
Okay. Next, Bob Fletcher, town-owned land, college highway, eight point four-four-two acres, book one-seven-eight, page ninety-two. Hi, Bob, how are you?
Hi, I'm good, how are you?
Good, thanks.
Last time we discussed this, June of two thousand sixteen. I've done a little bit of homework on it since the last meeting. The land is still in the same situation that it was in when we met before. In the meeting, I was told that the land had to stay in the town's possession. And speaking with the DEP, this is not true. If the town seeks to discharge the land, they can petition the DEP to release it. It will stay on the DEP's list of a cleanup site. Let's see. We also spoke with the Board of Health. The Board of Health pretty much put their hands up and said that they couldn't do a whole lot for us. We did look into the monitoring that was supposed to be done by both the town and Environmental Compliance Service. We found out that the Environmental Compliance Service no longer exists. They've been bought out by another company. All of the records that they had for the project have been destroyed. So, there are no more, their archives are completely gone. There is, oh, there are, two grants available through Mass Department of Ag Resources. One of them we used two years ago for drainage project above this land. And I said at the time that I felt this was probably something that would be a few phases to try to fix this whole situation. Unfortunately, the land falls under State Chapter thirty B, which is considered surplus land, has to go out to bid, to auction. I did approach Ed Gibson about this. I asked him if there was a way we could go, not, I don't want him, want it to sound the way it's coming out, but to go around thirty B and bring it to a town meeting. The town, the land was taken through the process of a town meeting. Would that be possible to go down that route again? Ed did not think so. I was wondering if we could possibly ask either our state rep or Senator Humison what the chances of that were, that... Not that I'm trying to get out from anything, but my concern to the Board of Health was if it went out to auction and somebody obtained it, we'd be back in the same position because you couldn't hold their feet to the fire. There is a tremendous amount of work that needs to be done down there. It was our hope to try to obtain. I did speak with MDR last week about a grant that deals with stormwater management and this land would definitely, if I applied for it to work, to work on this land, they told me I could be a recipient. And the grant that I accessed two years ago, I can also reapply for that again. So, I was trying to find a way to, I have about a year before I apply for this. I can't apply for it if I don't own it. And so, that's my concern. So, I was wondering what your feelings were on this.
Now, just for clarification, this is the old tire dump that was cut out of a larger piece of land that you bought at an auction, correct?
Correct.
And the, and the judge cut it out, so we own that old tire dump.
And that was able, to enable us to receive grants ourselves.
I believe so, yes, for cleaning.
But it was, just to clarify, it was at the time, when it was subdivided, it was the, the hopes of APR that the land did not sit out there like it is now with no direction and to deteriorate like it has now. It was not ever supposed to end up in the town's surplus land. It was supposed to be returned to the farm upon completion of the tire project. And as the Board of Health asked me, do you have this in writing? I don't think you'll ever find it. But that was, the head of the APR at the time, Rich Hubbard, that was his request.
So, it sounds, some, some people weren't here, it sounds like you gotta do some research, Ed, on this. Because there's a, a lot of questions that Bob came up with on, on transferring and how we had to do it in thirty B. But also, I would think we need to talk to Concom and everybody to make sure, you know, what their interests are in the land and maybe come back to us with some thoughts, we can discuss more.
Yes, it's before my time, but I'm happy to do the research on it.
And what I was told is that there is a sequence and a write-up of the sequence of this that was done by the Board of Health in conjunction with Charlie Kinnicki, so I don't know, I've, I've never seen that document, but there is some sort of a sequence of events.
Yeah, I'll be happy.
Right now, there's tires that are buried and that...
There's, there are tires which they said when, when it was completed, tires that had been compressed down that have come to the surface. I, I make regular trips down there. I think you'd be hard pressed to maybe find it at the, at the utmost two hundred. There are, you can, they are scattered throughout, but they are only tires that have just come back to the surface. And I think probably the plan, kind of what we had hoped to try to do was to put some kind of a collection, like a retention basin, down in that gully just because of the sheer volume of water that's coming at us from every direction. And at the time of, if it would be something that would fly in the construction of the pond, any of the tires that are there, the excess, they could be easily removed and disposed of.
Can I just ask you, I just, you know, just, because I don't know, you currently lease some of the land or all of the land?
I, what I was, we were told by the Federal Bankruptcy Court that we were to oversee the property as if it was our own until the tire problem was taken care of.
Right. But I mean, you actually lease any part of that right there?
I don't lease it, I'm just, the town owns it and we take care of it.
So, what is your interest then in, in land that was at one point declared to be a tire dump and a toxic, you know, a toxic site? Like, what, what is your interest in the land?
My interest in it is, is that what's going on on your land is now coming onto my land.
Yeah, okay.
And as I addressed the board before, I've counted nine large washouts that are now on my land.
Okay.
And so, as I told my kids, if we do not do something about this, it's going to be catastrophic and it's going to cost a tremendous amount of money. There, there's more drainage that needs to be put in. There's just a phenomenal amount of water that goes down through that area and something has to be done about it.
And Randall did do something short-term.
Randall's, and we had, we had Mass Highway out there and everybody says, not my problem. And, and Randall said, you know, my hands really are tied in this thing because it's a money issue.
Okay.
So, my view on this is if I can obtain these grants and I can, you know, if we do it, do a phase, see if we can fix something, do another phase, I mean, it, it may take the next twenty years, but if we can obtain grant money to do it, that's, that's my interest in it. One of these washouts, as I told the board before, there's, there's one right out on Route ten, but there's one down in the back of the farm. It's phenomenal in size. And the trees, it just takes the trees, it takes everything with it and something has to be done about it.
So, just so I'm clear about this, you had mentioned about that it would typically have to go to auction? So, was your request that it not, that that be bypassed?
Well, my only, I, I, if it has to go that way, so be it. And the Board of Health said they could put stipulations on it. It is an APR piece of land, it is protected, it can't be developed. It was once part of the farm, I think it should be put back to the farm. I think my wife and I have cooperated with the town through this whole process, which has been over thirty years. And it was by feeling that if we put it in front of the voters and said, this is what's going on, would you back us up on it? Would you support us? That's what I'm asking for. I do not think you can keep turning your back on it.
Yeah, I'm not sure we can put it before the voters, but that's a question, obviously, Ed could, Ed could find out. Because thirty B, like you said, is pretty stringent.
Right. I understand that.
But at least we can get some answers.
Yep.
Okay. So, Ed will look into it and get back to us as soon as possible?
Yeah, it'll probably take a while, with this history, but I, I will do the research and get back to you.
Can you go check with Charlie and Geraldine and see if that document, if you can, from the Board of Health?
Yeah. You're gonna have to check with everybody, obviously. And when it comes up on the agenda again, we can make sure you know about it.
Okay.
Yeah, I just have a quick question. Question?
What do you estimate for tires that were left there after the, the town stabilized it? They spent, I guess they spent the money from the auction when they sold the farm to stabilize the best they could with what they had.
The, the problem was, um, you know, they, they invested a phenomenal amount of money in wetlands plants to put, to revegetate it. And it's so overcome with multiflora rose bushes and sumac that it just crowded all that stuff out. And it just, uh, it never really took.
I heard a rumor that it was roughly back then, roughly a million tires were put out there.
Yeah, but when you, when you, I, I know the one who really got everybody's attention was Bob Baker went down there. And Bob Baker, um, walked the gully back, forth, side to side. And he came up with a hundred twenty-five thousand tires and he was the closest one. And that's about what they took out of there. I don't think that there's thousands and thousands of tires buried there. We did have an issue where, um, at the beginning of the project where they started digging tires and they kept digging and digging and pulling tires and they said, at some point, we have to stop and we'll take what's on the surface and whatever comes up, we deal with it when they come up. And in my most recent visit, I think I could probably estimate there was probably fifty tires scattered about that had just come back to the surface.
I remember, I live on Gun Roads, I drive by there all the time. And back when they were dumping the tires, I used to see tractor trailers going out there and dumping.
Well, they were getting paid per tire, they would take them.
Crazy, they were dropping.
It was a huge fire hazard.
Yeah.
But if you look, if you looked at the logistics of it, I guess is the best word I'm looking for, each one of those trailers had an average of twelve hundred tires on it. Most of the tires were in it were car tires. So if you, I don't remember how, how many trailers came out of there, but when you do the math on it, a million tires just wouldn't fit in that gully. And if you take a pile of tires that's got two hundred tires in it and you put it in a pile, when you first look at it, you'd say, oh, it looks like there's a thousand tires there, and there really isn't. And the one thing that I did notice over the years is when I first saw the tires, I thought, oh, it looks like a million tires. And then you look at it from a different direction, you keep looking at it from different areas and then it starts to make sense of what's really there.
Yeah, I just, I'm not, I don't have a decision one way or the other which way to go with this, but taking on a liability like that, it would actually take the liability off the town in the long run because the town owns land.
Well, it will be, it, it will not be technically part of the farm, it will be its own separate entity. And, um, but just because the town hasn't had the ability or haven't done anything with it, and I, I just see it as more water coming at us. This year was a prime example. It, it's just not, at some point, we're just gonna have a massive hole there and, and then I'm gonna have real problems at my place.
We'll start losing cows.
Probably.
Okay, so Ed will do some research and, okay, thanks for coming.
Thanks.
Somebody have their hand up on, on this topic? You have to come up here, you have to introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Schwanga, resident of Southampton. I just had a quick question for you. With that being said, and possibly the decomposition of the tires, do you see or foresee anything happening to the water that will affect either your property, your animals, or even our health?
I can tell you that when you look at the tires, they look exactly the same as they looked thirty years ago. The biggest hazard back when they did this was them catching on fire. And I think we've pretty much put that to sleep. I'm really, um, I couldn't tell you if there's any law, I mean, I didn't put them there. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to make the situation better.
I was just, I was just wondering if you've seen any effects of your property.
The only thing that I do know down there is.
Research shows.
Yeah. The water is extremely.
Well, the reason why I'm asking is because of, um, they're doing a study for, um, environmental cancers. And I am a breast cancer survivor at forty-two. And environmentally, with the tires being either decomposed or in the water or the foods that we eat, I was just hoping that he could share with us if he's seen any effects on his animals, on the crops that he raises.
So it doesn't sound like he has.
The animals don't go near, we've always kept the fenced off, any of them.
But it could possibly be in the soil, therefore in the water.
It could be to some extent, but, um, all my animals are in town water, so.
Oh, that's good. Now, is, is the Health, is the Board of Health going to research that as well?
Well, they've already done a lot of research. Ed's gonna dig into the facts and bring it back to us.
Thank you.
And congratulations to you. Yes, sir?
Robert Floyd, fifteen E Street, just want to add a footnote. Approximately fifteen years ago, DEP, Department of Environmental Protection, ordered that the remaining tires be left where they were because they were so embedded into the stream and the banks. And they felt that would just cause more damage, but now they've come up on their own. Cheers.
Thanks. Okay, so we're gonna move on. We need, Jeremy needs to designate someone to represent the Select Board at the February fourth Hampshire Regional School District School Committee Meeting to vote on a representative from the five-member Town Select Boards to represent the town on the Hampshire Regional CBA negotiating team. Uh, CBA is Collective Bargaining Agreement Negotiating Team. So we need one of us to be on the negotiating team is what this is saying.
Well, it says chairman to designate, does that mean you pick somebody?
Yeah, that's according to six oh three CMR forty-one. CMR is Commonwealth of Mass Regulations.
We would get one representative from the five towns on the negotiating team.
Right, each Board of Selectmen will designate.
One person.
One person, which will go to the February fourth Hampshire Regional Meeting. And those, uh, designees shall elect one of their own to represent all the towns.
On the CBA.
Uh, for the CBA, correct.
Uh, if nobody wants to do it, I'm glad to go to that, it's up to you folks.
Well, I go routinely since I'm the liaison to the.
Okay, so would you like to do that?
Yeah, I wouldn't mind doing it, but, you know, depending upon, obviously, we want the best person, background.
We want the best person to be the final person there.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
So looking at who's available from the other towns.
Right, so let's, let's think of that, Francine. So if you're the one and you're, have a possibility of being the one in the end, do you have any background in negotiating with unions?
No.
Okay, so.
I do, but I'm gonna defer to either of you who are, have been on the negotiating team and/or liaison, liaison to the school department.
I don't know about Matt, I was thinking of him.
Yeah, he, I don't think he has any negotiating experience with unions. And Jim?
No, I have no experience.
Kind of stick myself foot in the mouth here, but I, I do this as a regular course of where I work.
So I think if you got the time.
I think you should be the person.
Well, it's not a matter of time, it's just one meeting, then we can go from there and decide.
Well, ultimately, if you're selected.
Yes.
Well, if, if I'm selected, I'm selected, but.
Pardon?
Well, that's, that's part of the, the Commonwealth of Mass Regulations, we have to designate somebody by law. Okay. Okay, do you want to come up?
We still should have our own representative.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Tammy Walunas, two ninety-eight College Highway, um, school, Hampshire Regional School Committee member. We had a team that was working with the teachers on the contract, we had six meetings. And then it was brought forward that we had not stated to all of the Select Board members that they needed to have somebody at it, because we did not know it. And so all the work that we've already done has to stop. And now we have to select somebody from here that'll go with the other four Select Boards. That there is somebody from Chesterfield that is, very much wants to be on it. So even if you don't have the experience.
Well, I guess the concern is somebody wanting to be on it versus somebody with experience on it is, is a whole nother question.
Yeah.
It would see who else came forward from the other towns and whoever had the most experience would be the one, I would think, would be the one who would be selected and should be selected.
So why don't we say, I'll go to this meeting, we'll see where it goes from there.
Need a motion?
Uh, yes.
I'll have a motion.
Well, actually, no, it's the chairman to designate, so I guess I'm self-designating here, based on our conversation. What, what time is the meeting?
They're six thirty.
Six thirty, okay. Select Board Letter of Support for Waiver of Environmental Impact Report for the Manham River Restoration Project, which is number twelve. Ed, you wanna go in a little background on that?
Uh, certainly, uh, they have asked for a letter of support because, uh, of a waiver for an environmental impact report for the Manham River Restoration Project, uh, which, which is the removal of the dam, restore fist patches and the wildlife habitat to the area. The, uh, shall we say, the state has the ability, or the secretary has the ability to waive the environmental impact report. So, um, they have asked if the Board of Selectmen would be willing to, um, sign a letter in support of that waiver. They actually provided, um, a draft letter, which I took, made a few edits to and put it on, uh, the Board of Selectmen letterhead, uh, in case you were willing to vote for, requesting, uh, the support for the waiver of the environmental impact report.
Now, is there any downside to approving the waiver? Does it take away any of our ability going forward?
No.
And what would be the reason why we'd, we would want to vote in favor of this?
It would be one less, you know, step, uh, would save in cost and would save in time.
And the downside would be, I get it wrong.
In this particular case, I, I can't really identify what the downside would be for us.
Well, I would say downside would be if there wasn't environmental impact and we didn't do a report to identify it.
Isn't the removal of the dam and having it be a natural waterway, isn't that actually an improvement environmentally to the area?
It's restoring it to the way it was before. I mean, on one side of it, it should restore the wildlife habitat, which I think is, is a positive. You know, some, some of the negatives of the project that I've heard have been probably more on a historical, um, basis for the, the dam and the pond that's been there.
Does our legal counsel have any associate who specializes in environmental law who could advise us what we're doing here in terms of implications if we waive this and then there is an issue going forward?
I'm not sure if they do, I can ask.
Has the Conservation Commission commented on this?
Uh, no, it was actually because of the fact that the Conservation Commission is going to have some oversight over the project. Usually, they won't go to Conservation Commissions and ask for a letter of support of, for the waiver.
It almost seems like we should go to Concom though and just ask them if they see any environmental impact, uh, issues there before we do this.
I can do that and I can send it off to legal counsel and see if they've got anybody that has any expertise in this area.
Yeah, I agree. Also, um, this is the grant that was applied for to do this work. And is there anything in terms of the grant that.
Requires this.
Doing an environmental impact study?
Good question. Ed, Charlie should know about that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would get a little bit more information. Is this time-sensitive for any reason?
Uh, I'm sure it is, I, I couldn't see what I can find out for, before the February fourth meeting though.
Yeah, I, I think all of us don't have a comfort level at this point to do this, is that accurate? Want more information?
Is it February fifth meeting?
Yeah, I want more information.
So Ed, maybe if you could follow up with that information and get back to us when you can?
Sure.
Thanks. Any other necessary business that can't wait to February fifth, regular Select Board meeting? Did we talk about that Neighborhood Outreach Grant that we received for the pilot project at ten point seven thousand?
Yes, another celebration, absolutely.
That was, that came out of the Open Space Committee. Diane Fetterman wrote that grant, so we got the money, that's great.
And that is a grant that'll allow, um, a couple of people to have some programming for landowners in town. It'll involve, um, providing information, both legal and otherwise, as well as benefits to landowners to offer land to the town and/or, um, help the town, you know, just learn what the options are for their own land. So, and so we're right now looking at getting information from the Assessors Office and it's great news.
Yep, so on a roll with grants, hopefully that continues. Okay, signatures, PCFs, we have none, licenses, permits, we have none. Francine, you signed a warrant?
Mm-hmm, it's a warrant, W nineteen dash twenty-nine for a hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred eighty-five dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Okay, no signatures required on that. Other documents requiring signature, none. Minutes to approve, December eleventh, that's item fourteen. Did everybody get a chance to look at these?
Yes.
Okay, if they did, we need a motion to accept as written. You have a question, okay.
Did you want to give a motion in a second or do you argue that?
Well, if you've got a question, why don't we go over it now before we get a motion?
Francine had something first.
Yeah, I, I, I did.
Go ahead.
On the section, on the report, um, from Smith Vocational, I had asked about how we could look into setting up some type of an advisory committee for Smith, just simply because eighty percent of the students that go to Smith Vocational live outside of North Hampton. But North Hampton has all the jurisdiction and I don't know how our descending school districts have any input. And that was, that was my comment, so I, I wrote a sentence up, I'll give it to you. Yeah.
So, uh, is there any other changes before we get going? Go ahead, Jim?
No, no, I'm good.
Yep.
I got another question.
Okay, go ahead.
We actually, the top on page two on B, it says, the staff has asked if the town hall would be closing early on Christmas Eve. Did we end up voting? I thought we voted.
We did.
But I think it was at the next meeting.
It was at the next, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so any other questions on this? So if not, Francine, do you want to make a motion and append your sentence to it?
Yeah, I'll give it to her in writing, so, yeah, I move to accept the minutes with the amendment put forward on the Smith Vocational presentation for the meeting of December eleventh.
Could you just read that in to the?
Okay. Investigate how an advisory committee for Smith Vocational may be formed, given the fact that eighty percent of students attending Smith Vocational are, are residents of communities outside of North Hampton. The advisory committee would be made up of those, of representatives of those sending school districts.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that? So all in favor of the minutes as amended, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Okay, calendar Select Board meeting, February fifth, before the special town meeting, that's at Norris. So it'll be in the library, Ed, I assume?
Yes.
Six o'clock?
Six o'clock. February's coming quick, huh? It's just my hunch, but I believe we have, somebody wants to talk in open time for the public. So if you wanna, if you wanna come, introduce yourself, if there's more than one, just feel free to stand up.
Hi again, Jennifer Schwang. Members of the board, teachers, and most importantly, community. I am here today as mother of a kindergartner at Norris and a resident of Southampton. I'm here tonight because like you, I want to see the students at Norris succeed. And I've seen firsthand the powerful impact our educators have on our students' academic process, success, excuse me. As a parent, I'm concerned about how the budget impacts the curriculum or lack of for my child and for the. for my child and for those. After years of budget cuts and a focus on test-taking, we need to invest in programs that can help all of our student population. How do we do this? Well, the only solution I can fathom is providing excellent quality teachers who work diligently to make the students successful, sufficient spending per student. We must partner up in order for these issues and/or concerns to be rectified. As the old African proverb states, "It takes a village to raise a child," and in this case, it takes a community to educate a child. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, Linda Brastad, 87 Pleasant Street. I am a mom of three children here. I went to this school, this was my classroom right here, and I'm also a special ed teacher at Norris School. I'm still currently working without a contract. I recognize that all of you are extremely dedicated to this town. You're all volunteering your time, so do we. At this point, and please forgive me if my stats are a little bit off, budgets fluctuate, but this is to the best of my knowledge. Norris students receive about $12,000 per student. Up at Hampshire Regional, per student is about $17,000. That's a 5,000 difference. My curriculum budget, well, our curriculum budget is zero. We get no money for books. No money for books. It's zero. And as an educator, it's zero. How can you educate if you don't have knowledge to be able to hand to those students each day? It's disappointing. Like I said, I'm a special education teacher. Right now, I'm teaching second, third, and fourth grade. My classroom budget, I have about $30 per student for a school year. These are special education students, dyslexics, autism, ADHD, Tourette's. I have a full gamut. You are providing me $30 a year to educate them. I need more. I need more. At this time, like I said, my stats might be off by a percentage or two, so please forgive me. 28% of the money that's allocated towards education in Southampton goes to Norris. Only 28%. And yes, I paid for that two and a half. My paycheck is less this year than last year. My taxes are higher. I'm okay with that. I want to invest in my kids, I want to invest in your kids. But cost of living has gone up and my health insurance has gone up. I'm taking home less money this year than last year. This is directly impacting my family and other families. My kids, luckily or unluckily, have a mom as a teacher. But not everybody has that resource. You have to invest in our kids, they deserve it. But having zero curriculum, it's insulting to them, they deserve more. I went here, we had books. And we, I'm not even talking about modern day or books where paper, I'm talking about online resources, if that's the way we're going. But we need your support. So, thank you.
Anybody else want to speak on the topic? Sure.
Christina Maddison, Rattle Hill Road. I didn't, you moved on from Pomeroy Meadow before I had a chance to ask a question. So, that is about the public hearing. If, we know that time is short, and I'm just wondering if you are keeping that in mind, keeping in mind that if the town is going to contemplate exercising the right of first refusal, I believe, if memory serves, that we have to have a public hearing and the town meeting, special town meeting. So, maybe that, those things need to be scheduled.
Yeah, Ed is working on those, yeah.
Thank you.
He's been delving into that. So, getting back to the school, if you were all here last year when we went over the budget, we did a two and a half override because we didn't have enough money coming in in order to push it all out. And that's the issue. If you're familiar at all with Hampshire Regional budget, how that's set up, we're one town out of five, and we really don't have a say a lot of the years because the other four towns vote, and we have to follow through. So, that's, we have to go with the vote, Hampshire Regional. We have to negotiate with the other departments, including the school, and we only have so much money. So, every year, you know, you're welcome to come to the process, but last year was the first year we did a two and a half override, pretty sure we ever did.
20 years.
20 years, 1991, right. So, it's the, also, the residents out there who vote to do this, we only have so much money coming in, and then we have to funnel it out. And you can't close a library to fund a school, or close a school to fund the police department, so we have to parse it out, and that's the big issue. So, we have to sit down, and we have to figure out where the money goes as best we can during the process. But you folks are all invited, it's all an open process, and advocate for, you know, the school. We're not saying you don't deserve more, we're saying we have a pot, just like at home, and where does the money go every year? That's the hard part. Do you folks want to say anything, or...
Well, I just want to say that I hear you. It's been a very difficult budget thing with the way the Hampshire Regional works, and we've been trying very hard, which is why we had a forum specifically on the schools for just after the new year, to understand and to have the superintendent and the business manager and the rest of them come and just talk about the budget for Hampshire Regional. We've also been trying to get the representatives from the Hampshire Regional School Department to realize that they have a say on approving or not approving the budget up there. But once the four towns approve the budget, Southampton has to go along with it, and it negatively impacts. I mean, I understand there's a tremendous imbalance. So, I think the more all of us can get involved and to speak up is helpful. I mean, we all worked very hard to get the override passed, to save six teachers, and we have to do more. I agree.
And what Reenie was saying, we have six members from Southampton who are on the HRHS board, so they're all listed on the school site. If you know those folks, talk to them and say, "You've got to balance Hampshire Regional with Norris better." And that's, you know, that's what we have to do.
Well, I think among, I think we've set up an arrangement with both school committees, both Norris and our own representatives to Hampshire Regional, to have a dialogue during this budget process, so that we're all on the same page, understanding the impact of the budget on both entities, and what we could do for one and another, and see however it is that we can best share the resources that we have available. But I think that communication may be probably one of the first, I think, that's take, as a formal process, to get that dialogue, so that putting our heads together, hopefully we'll come up with a better solution. We know, I mean, we see the numbers, we know where the impact is.
Erica Mitchell, grade three teacher, I don't live in town, and I don't know how this works, so I don't know if I'm allowed to speak at your...
Absolutely.
Okay. So, I guess I have two questions. So, I think we all understand, too, the pot is small, and there's lots of people to pay with that one pot. Are there plans in place to generate more revenue, so that we can have more money to fund? Because the school has been, there's been cuts each year, I've been there eight years, and it's less and less and less. We're at 12,000 on average per pupil, the state average is 15, Hampshire Regional is 17. So, we're getting less and less, and we're really, it's, we're scraping together to try and get by, and eventually, it's going to not work. Is there a plan to generate more revenue in town?
Well, we're kind of limited because we have no sewer systems in town. So, you know, you can't open a big business along the main route because there's not the capacity for that. You know, small businesses open up, you know, you have a coffee shop and all that, but that doesn't generate the revenue you're talking about.
And then, the other question I have is, so with that...
I was mentioning about, something about what you just said first. The biggest problem is the lack of state funding for education in the state of Massachusetts, and so, everybody needs to speak out about that, whether it's regional transportation or special ed. There are mandates with MKAST and with transportation. They promised us 100% funding of regional transportation, and we're lucky if we get 60% of it. So, we're spending local resources, and a huge amount of the revenue of this town is from property taxes. And so, you can't possibly pay for all this infrastructure with the existing property taxes. So, it's really state funding, so we have to get in touch with legislators, and, you know, there is a recent initiative to try to get the state to come through with what they're supposed to be covering. So, this is what, there's been a couple of, yeah, so they're trying to improve, what's the name of the initiative? It's...
Fund Our Future.
Fund Our Future. But I'll pass this down, is this okay to...
These are all same?
Yes, can I add a sentence to that? It's, it would be a reset of the foundations, original foundations that happened after 1993 with the education reform, and it would be a reset of the foundation budget spending.
Which is critically needed.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then, my other question is, I'm not sure how, so I think the numbers are something like 60% of Hampshire Regional students are from Southampton, and the other 40% are from the other towns. Is there some way, I don't know if it's bylaws or how it works, but is there a way, if we have 60% students, that our vote is 60%? Because those towns, like you said, if they vote yes for Hampshire Regional, then we end up getting the short end of the stick each year. Is there a way to change that, or that just...
It's on our agenda, we're reviewing the Hampshire Regional budget expenditures in agreement. That's what we're doing now, we're reviewing it.
So, it could possibly be changed.
Right, we brought in, we brought in the folks from Hampshire Regional last month or so to talk to them about that. So, in order to change it according to the agreement, all five towns have to vote at their town meetings and get it passed. So, if we say, for instance, we don't want to be in Hampshire Regional anymore, we have to get that passed at our town meeting. But the other four towns have to vote to accept us. So, you know, it's going to be very difficult to get changes done, but we are pursuing that because we agree, it's, we've got 55%, I believe it is, should have 55% of the vote, or at least a better say in what happens on the budget process. So, we are looking for...
But we do have a weighted vote on the budget and with other things at the Hampshire Regional, so it's a rolling average of the number of students from the various towns in a rolling average. So, we do have that weighted vote, but when it goes to the towns, the town's going to approve the budget or not approve the budget, and if four of them do, and Southampton has traditionally been last on the vote, and the other ones approve it, and we basically are sort of dragged into it, as it exists.
But the problem with the weighted vote is like 47.5%, so we're still in the minority. Yeah.
But I second what John said, too, is talk to the people that are on the Hampshire Regional School Committee also, because it's, the budget starts with the approval there.
Thank you.
And one of the other things that came up during the Norris presentation, well, when both schools presented, is finding other ways of doing things that could save money, that you might use for something else, not to take the money away. We talked about a, the need for a, someone with special skills in language-based learning disabilities, I believe, and that we're sending the students out of district. How much money would we save if we were to start that program? And Norris hired our own teacher. And then, by virtue of school choice, maybe some other children with that same learning disability could come to Norris, and we could generate some revenue. I mean, there are things that I think need to be explored, buying a van as opposed, you know, at the high school, they bought a van, hired their own driver. Transportation costs, costs more per day, per student than it does to educate them for the year. So, those would be kind of the thinking, and I think the people who do it every day could have some input into that process. If you're thinking about ways, it know of ways. I think the school committee members would appreciate hearing from you.
And I think the new superintendent comes from a financial background, and he's only been here about six, seven months, so I think he's going to look at things differently and try to figure out a better way to do it, you know, outside the box type, to use an old saying. So, that's what we've got to do, we all have to be involved in it, in the process.
Shannon Tzizinski, and I'm a fourth grade teacher at Norris. And I just want to urge you to support us. You know, we are not feeling supported by our own school committee administration, and, you know, we're not asking for a lot. We're not, we're just asking for enough money to pay for the prices that have gone up in the past year. I mean, I, like Linda Brastad, I'm making less money. I can't afford my mortgage, I mean, I'm going to have to move. You know, I just need enough money to get me through the next year, you know? I just, it amazes me, it just baffles me that we were offered 0% to begin with. You know, I mean, that is, and 1%, is, they're not going to agree on 1%? Okay, stop? All right, okay. I just...
Yeah, we don't want to go into negotiations, yeah.
I'm just very, I'm just very disappointed. I've worked here for 21 years. It's been terrible.
Anyone else? Well, we appreciate you coming, I hope it's not the last time we see you, because during the whole process, we need all the input we can get. Anything else? Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else in general for open time?
Do you have any more meeting dates besides the fifth? Do you have one more?
I thought we did.
If you'd like, we can do that now.
That's the end, we're all done. No more meetings after that.
The way it's been going, this, every Tuesday, be here.
It'll be the 19th.
I think we already mentioned the 19th, because I have it in my book, but...
We do have the 19th scheduled.
Yeah, I have the 19th, the 5th and the 19th, and also, the 5th again in March.
Yeah, it's good, 5/19, 5/19.
Yep. Okay. You're welcome. Okay. We have executive sessions next. If, did I miss anything before we go into executive session? No? Okay. So, we're going to go into executive session, I'll read off the reasoning, and we will not come back in open session. So, we're going into executive session, Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, "To Discuss Strategy With Respect to Litigation. If an opening meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares." It's regarding 71 Gilbert Road zoning enforcement. Same Mass General Law, sections again. "Strategy With Respect to Collective Bargain or Litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, the chair so declares." This is Local 98 International Union of Operating Engineers, which is a highway union. Executive Session 3, same general law and sections, collective bargaining once again. This is for the Police Officers, New England Benevolent Police Association. Executive Session 4, same general law and sections, collective bargaining once again for dispatchers, New England Benevolent Police Association. Next, it's Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, Number 7, "To Comply With or Act Under the Authority of Any General or Special Law or Federal Grant in Aid Requirements. Approval of Executive Session Meeting is December 2018." Need a motion to go into executive session.
I move.
A second, please?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Broden, aye.
Martin, aye.
Tishman, aye.
Lebri, aye.
Okay, we're going into executive session, a quick five-minute break, so Ryan could clear up. Thank you, Ryan.